So we will formally call our meeting to order at nine oh two AM. And if it's ready to go, I'll ask everyone to stand for the singing of our national anthem. All right. All right, so here we go. One point O additions to the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none. Two point O adoption of the agenda. I get a motion to adopt the agenda. Counselor Kamana, all in favor? That is carried. Three point O is corrections or amendments. So June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, regular meeting of council minutes. Any issue with those? July fourteenth, twenty twenty one, special meeting of council minutes. Concerns with those? Okay, so four point O is the adoption of the June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, regular meeting of council minutes. I'm willing to adopt that. Counselor Dodds, all in favor? And July fourteenth, twenty twenty one, special meeting of council minutes. Counselor McGee, all in favor? That is carried. So five point O is our public hearings. We do have one public hearing this morning. It is for the new aquatic facility debenture bylaw twenty twenty one dash ten dash F. So I will declare this public hearing open at nine oh six AM. This is for bylaw number twenty twenty one dash ten dash F, which is the new aquatic facility debenture bylaw. Present today is myself, all members of council excluding Corey Peebles, counselor Peebles, as well as administration. Purpose of the public hearing to receive comments, concerns, and questions from the public with regard to the proposed new aquatic facility debenture bylaw twenty twenty one dash ten dash F. Background. The above bylaw received first reading at the June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, regular meeting of council and may receive second and third readings today depending upon the comments received at this public hearing. Notification of the bylaw requesting comments from the public and advising them of the public hearing have been provided through an accordance with Town of Drayton Valley bylaw twenty eighteen dash seven dash A, which is our electronic advertising bylaw. To facilitate the public hearing process, any comments received, written or verbal, will be presented as a package at the time of the public hearing. So at this time, I'll ask if there's any comments from the floor. We have anyone online? Okay. Did administration receive any written submissions?
No written submissions were received.
Okay. So with that, going once, going twice. I would declare the public hearing closed at nine oh seven AM. All right, so that decision item will be coming up, but before then, we have a couple of delegations. So our first delegation, six point one, is Mr. Brock Hutton with EXL aggregates and rentals. Mr. Hutchins, if you could take the podium over here. I know the mic used to always just be live, but I believe now we have to turn it on. There we go.
Yep. Morning. Good morning. How are you doing?
Not too bad. How is everyone?
Doing pretty good, thank you.
Good, good. Um, I guess I'll just reintroduce myself, Brock Hutton, EXL aggregate. Again, if I mix up my words, I'm not a good public speaker. I did miss school, but I don't like public speaking. Um, so just wanted to just touch base in regards of the, um, the cell five lagoon tender that came out. So, uh, my company, EXL aggregate, uh, we're a civil construction company, earthworks, road building, gravel hauling, underground, things like that. Based here in local, local in Drayton Valley. Um, so we, we submitted a price for the, the, uh, cell five lagoon there. Um, and then, uh, closed and all that and, and received, um, notification. We weren't awarded it, which fair enough. Um, but it was because of two, uh, we didn't have our core and we had a clarification in there. So, um, I'll kind of touch on two points and then kind of circle back and it'll make sense hopefully. Um, so at this point, I mean, I don't, I haven't been told a hundred percent because I guess someone's really able to tell me if, if we were the lowest bidder, but I've just threw my digging in this and that. I'm pretty confident and I'm pretty good at what we do. I'm bidding stuff, so I'm pretty confident we were and whatnot. So if I'm not, then I do apologize, but, um, usually if you're too high, that's just what comes out from the engineers. Price was too high, move on and fair enough. Um, so the tender said we didn't have, uh, our core. Um, I don't have my core paperwork yet. We're working through it. We're a new company. I have a pile of safety documents that were on a, a USB stick, um, that I attached with it. Um, that stuff has gone in for our court. It just takes a bit of time. Um, I'm not sure if it got looked at or not. I mean, we have our health and safety manual, work procedures, tailgate meetings, inspections, new hire policy, drug and alcohol policy. Like we got everything. Um, actually just recently, three months ago, I got approved, um, to haul with our trucks. We're sending them up to Sing crude, to haul out of Sing crude. So my documents were good enough for Sing crude, but maybe it wasn't enough for down here or something. Um, I don't know if it was looked at or not. I'm not too sure. So I can't, I can't really say there. Um, the part that kind of just caught me a little upset, I guess you could say. Um, so fair enough in a tender, if it says you need to have such and such, then so be it. But also in that exact same tender, um, it says, I mean, I'm quoting it right now, the town may elect at a sole discretion. I mean, this goes against me or for me. Don't get me wrong. Uh, the town may elect at sole discretion to accept or reject any tender or part thereof and to waive any defect, irregularity, mistake, non-compliance in any tender and to accept or reject any tenders or alternative proposals in whole or in part, which seem to be most advantageous to the town. So kind of, I'm sitting there going, okay, well, all right. Um, second point, we are disqualified for using a clarification just in our methodology with, which, how I had said it. So I'll circle back to that. That may be more on the engineer's end. Um, the third part, just kind of, which was just kind of, I was getting frustrated with is just this past year. Um, in the winter, I reached out to the town, to the, to the infrastructure division there. Um, I had a job. We needed some clay. So I reached out, see if we could buy the clay over, the excess clay over where the CETC center is there. So I got a document, we did it, assigned it, agreed to everything, pricing and all that. So that would have been about seventeen thousand bucks or so, um, that I would have paid the town for the clay. Um, the job actually got larger than we figured and the, the oil company that needed the clay, they actually didn't budget enough. It would have been good for everybody because it would have been more clay, more money for everybody. Uh, but they didn't budget enough because there was at the location, there was so much contaminant in the ground. So they had to put a, a stop on it. Um, I also just bid another private job in town where I'd actually clean that whole pile right out if I could, and that'd be about forty grand to the town. Um, and then I got a call three or four months ago, um, for a fall project. They need about eight thousand cubic meters of topsoil up in Ant Whistle. So there's the topsoil pile there and I knew, I was like, oh, I can get it right there. No problem. They're calling me looking for material. So that'd be about thirty, forty grand that I'd be throwing towards the town there. Um, so again, so I guess what I'm kind of just want to, I guess, voice a little bit. Um, is that just like, I, I get it if, if someone's non-compliant with a tender, you know, fair enough. I've seen both. I've done lots both ways. Um, but like, I'm willing to throw a ton of money into the town to try and help. Like I want to keep that money in the town if I can, for sure. I live there too. But I'm not even given a five minute phone call, like just to discuss the tender or maybe just go over and go, hey, what about this? Um, I've done this. I mean, I'm still fairly young, I guess, but I've done it a long time. Um, I've had subs. Sometimes the lowest price is not the way to go. Don't get me wrong. I've seen, I've seen both, but I mean, quick phone call going, hey Brock, how are you going to do this? And I go, no clue, going to fly by the seat of my pants. Well, no, probably shouldn't go with me. Um, or what safety documents you have, nothing. Okay. Well, probably shouldn't go with me again. Um, you know, we have all that. And so just kind of a little frustrated, I guess you could say. Um, I've got a ton of experience in the lagoon landfill cell builds. Uh, the previous company I was a project manager for, for seven years. That's pretty much all we did for Tervita and Secure. We went to pretty much all their locations with expansions and this and that. So it's, it wasn't a matter of experience and whatnot in there. So, um, so yeah, just kind of, um, wasn't given a, I couldn't get a straight answer from anybody. And usually if your price is too high, you'll just get that. It's, they're, they're okay to say that. And, and then just with all this other stuff was just a little bit frustrated that, and like I said, it can go both ways. The town can reject. They don't have to, don't have to give an explanation. That even goes for me too. I mean, they don't have to give an explanation to me too. I'm just kind of surprised usually if it is the best price that, you know, quick phone call or a, you know, quick being five minute meeting or something. At that point, if there's a clarification there that I had, they go, hey, can you get rid of this? And either I go, no, I can't move on or, or yeah, I can. I'll go do the job. So, um, so yeah, I just wanted just to kind of, I was just a little bit frustrated, I guess you could say. Um, that there was just kind of no, I know you guys might have not known about the clay, but it's just frustrating mind that I'm going like, I'm trying to, you know, do us work and happy to throw money right back in the, in the town instead of going past, you know, some other piles, going out, pass the bridge or something and getting material out there. I know it's in town. I might as well put that money back into, into the town and I live here. I'm a taxpayer. So a little frustrated if all of a sudden they have a higher price going and doing some work that we were capable of doing and paying a higher price. And again, sometimes lowest price isn't always best. Don't get me wrong, but, but a quick phone call or something like that. So just wanted to, just been a little bit frustrated and just wanted to kind of voice my opinion and just my concerns and whatnot. So I don't have much more. I appreciate the time and, and whatnot, but that's all I just kind of had to say.
No, we certainly appreciate you coming and, uh, and coming in front of us. You know, oftentimes people get frustrated and they'll go on Facebook or something like that. It's, uh, more productive if you come here and talk to us. So, um, you know, I don't have all the, the details behind this, but I think, um, you know, I'll certainly reach out to our administration, um, in the next coming days and, uh, we'll see if we can find some more information, but I guess while we have you here, let's see if there's any questions that council has for Mr. Hutton. So, Counselor McGee? Oh, you're just, okay. All right. So, uh, so I guess my, my pledge to you is we will look into this and, um, we will, uh, depending on what we find, we'll, we'll let you know.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. So our second delegation is Drayton Valley R C M P stats for June twenty twenty one, acting staff sergeant, Aaron Matthews.
I'm still acting. I'm doing a good job acting. So, uh, you did get a copy of the statistics for June. Um, as you can see, uh, between twenty twenty one to twenty, or twenty twenty to twenty twenty one, from January to June, we do have an increase in, in persons crime. Um, and that's, um, just the way it is. I think COVID had the big impact on people being stuck together, not being able to go out, that type of thing. Hopefully that will start, um, decreasing a bit. However, with the bars open and stuff, that might not be the case either. So, uh, we did have, uh, five assaults with a weapon reported. One was domestic related. Uh, and then we had, uh, seven other assaults. Total of five charges were laid in, in those particular instances. So, um, you would see that, uh, mental health act, we had, uh, ten reported in, um, in June. Uh, we did not have to transport anybody in June. Uh, we also executed two search warrants for drug trafficking and, uh, were able to take an awful lot of drugs, money and some property uh, off of the streets of Drayton Valley, which was excellent. So we're working hard on that. We are continuing to monitor our prolific offenders as usual. Uh, each police officer is assigned a specific individual for them to keep tabs on. So, uh, we are doing that. Uh, the June was not a good month between the missing person and then, uh, early in July, we had the individual that went into the river. Um, but, uh, I just wanted to say that the citizens and the community of Drayton Valley, Brazo County, uh, was simply amazing. Um, how they pulled together in times of need and help, um, truly amazing. Um, I was just so proud and so proud to be, uh, a member of the town of Drayton Valley and, uh, I, I was totally blown away with all of the, uh, support and, and assistance that, that, uh, people provided. Um, that's really about all I have. Uh, we, oh, well, I suppose we do have, uh, some new people in Drayton Valley, uh, new members. We had, uh, two new members start on June the third. We have another one starting on August seventh, and then we have another one starting on September thirteenth. So, um, we have had a couple of transfers out, uh, which is the reason why we're getting all these new people in. Um, but, uh, again, as I've said before, sometimes it's, it's not such a bad thing to have the new people because they're excited to be here and excited to, to work and, uh, it's a good thing. So far they're great. So no complaints.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much for that. Um, I will open it up to questions from council, but, so when I look at these stats, you know, most of them appear to be, I mean, the one page, it kind of has the color, a lot of them going down, a lot of the other, for year over year changes are decreasing. So I mean, when I read that, it's, I get like a positive feeling like, oh, it seems like we're, we're getting ahead of it. So, um, on the front lines, um, do you kind of have that same sense too that, you know, it's a little bit more optimism out there? It's not just, uh, trying to keep your head above water with all the inrush?
No, and, and there is, however, I'm, I'm going to kind of hold off as to my optimism just yet because of, we did see such a big decrease in everything because of everything shut down for COVID. Uh, now with everything opening up, well, I just, those, the statistics that we had, especially over the last couple of years are not really reflective of a normal, normal year. So I think we have to kind of be careful when it comes down to, uh, saying, hey, we're doing, we're doing really good, um, with regards to that because the calls for service were down, of course, in certain areas, uh, but, and then we had the whole, we've got the whole court system issue. Uh, so, um, I would, like I said, uh, I am optimistic, however, it's, it's not a real true reflection of what normalcy is yet.
So hopefully next year, the same year to year, it's not a hundred percent increases in everything.
Hopefully we don't.
Okay. Questions? Counselor Dodds?
Well, thank you for all your hard work and dedication. It's greatly appreciated. Um, so I missed the last PAC meeting and I was just reading the, um, the letter of support from Brazo County. And in it, it was mentioned, um, the rural police action committee, the RPAC. Can you just ta- talk a little bit about that?
It's, it's, I, I actually, I think that I had asked them to change that because the RPAC is the rural, um, police. Uh, it's the crisis team. It is the PAC team.
It is. It's nothing, it's not, that's what I was, it's nothing new. Okay. It's current. Okay.
And I had actually asked them to change that. I said that, you've got the wrong acronym for the wrong thing there. So yeah. No, it is the crisis team that we've been trying to, to work on. So.
Okay. And then, and then the PAC team is still, okay, the PAC team. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
It's not, it's not a new.
It's not a new. I was like, okay, did I miss something?
Uh, like I said, I asked them to make those changes. So I'm not sure if, uh, you have the old copy or whether or not they actually sent out the, you know, because I said that, no, RPAC does not stand for this, but, yeah. So I did clarify that.
Any other questions?
Just want to chat a little bit about, um, uh, our, our population of homeless or, or tenters. If we've got sites that you're monitoring, uh, where people are, are actually tenting. And, uh, secondly, as we head into the fall, um, we know that we're, our funding issues might be, uh, in trouble for MAT programs and those kinds of things. And, and I know that you sit on, uh, the, uh, couple of committees that will be addressing that. So can you update us a little bit on, on those folks?
Uh, with regards to the funding, I know, um, where it's pretty precarious right now. Um, we are monitoring, especially when we get any reports of anything going up and, and, and such. Uh, we work closely with Colton to, uh, go and, and also with Adam, um, the health inspector in order to go and, you know, move them on. However, again, moving them on, they just go somewhere else, right? So I'm not so sure what you were really solving by saying, well, you can't be here. Um, so I know that there are, um, some initiatives. I know that FCSS was working on, um, housing, uh, housing first program and they had applied again for more funding on that. Um, there's also some other options or other ideas that are kind of going around because it's, it's nice to, uh, provide someone with a place to stay. However, they have to kind of start changing their habits. Um, so I, I, you know, you can't, it's not just providing them with a house or a place to stay. It's taking a look at the big package, which is the mental health side of things, the drugs, the addictions, all of that, right? So you can kind of, I think that we need to start looking at something, um, that is going to be more of a package deal so that we can address a lot of the concerns with the homeless. And one of the biggest issues with the MAT program I found last year was them banning people. Um, because the individuals that were running it, like the actual volunteers and such, um, they're not, they don't understand the type of people that are going to be utilizing the MAT program, uh, because it's not just, you know, you and I that are going to go and have a night's sleep there. These people have got other issues. Um, and I, so when they start banning people because they're loud, they're boisterous, they're, you know, um, I always said, phone us because we know them and we can usually deal with them and usually calm them down. Uh, so banning a homeless person from the only place where they can stay for the night, that just pushes them into the vestibules and, and such, right? So, um, I think that I would really like to see the MAT program. I hope they get the funding, uh, because it is something that, uh, that is, uh, needed for our homeless people. Uh, we're also looking at some, I, I think Edson just created these pods. Uh, so we are going to, there's just a few people that are going to go out to Edson and take a look at those and see, now it just started. Uh, they just, it's only been running for a couple of weeks now. So we're not sure how it's all going to transpire. But we have to come up with some kind of ideas to assist these people. Um, they are, they are residents of Drayton Valley and surrounding area. Um, as I've said before, these people, for the most part, grew up here. And, uh, I think we have a duty in order to assist them. But like I said, it's a whole package. It's not just giving them a place to stay. It's, it's bigger than that.
Well said. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you very much for taking the time.
Thank you.
Yes, you as well. Okay. So that moves us to our decision items and seven point one in relation to our public hearing is the new aquatic facility debenture bylaw twenty twenty one dash ten dash F, presented for second and third reading. I have Ms. Elvira Thompson to walk us through this.
Good morning.
Morning.
So we are, um, needing to borrow five million, four hundred eighty-two thousand, seven hundred ninety-two dollars in order to finish the, or to help with the new aquatic facility project. Um, the total budget for that project is twenty-one million, two hundred forty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. And the remaining of the funds are, um, coming from various grants and donations. So we need to have this borrowing bylaw passed, uh, before I can apply for the, uh, the debenture, which has a deadline of July thirty first.
Right. Thank you very much. Any questions for administration? Counselor Dodds?
Good morning. Um, can you just give a breakdown, um, when you show that the estimates in the following grants contribution? Wherein there is, does it show, I guess, the town and the county's investment into the project?
If you, um, do you have the bylaw in front of you?
Yeah.
Okay. So I just broke it down by like actual types of, of funding. So with the federal grant and the provincial grant, so the federal grants would be the, um, ISIP. Uh, provincial grants would be our MSI funding. And local grants would be, uh, Brazo County and, um, Parkland County, and then donations are all our donation revenues. So you're wondering our contribution compared to the counties?
Yes.
Well, so the borrowing is essentially our contribution. So it's the full then. Right. And so any donations or anything that we can get, any funding we can get from now going forward, it'll just reduce our portion of that, uh, five million dollars, um, that we're borrowing.
So then what happened to our two point, whatever million that we had in reserves to go towards the pool? Is that included?
We're borrowing instead.
We're borrowing instead. Okay.
We're borrowing instead so that we can facilitate or take, take advantage of the really low interest rates. And, uh, yeah, so we'll just replenish those reserves.
And then that money will still stay. Is it, is it a designated pool account or where will that money be moved then?
Yeah. So the money will be moved out and used for the pool out of that reserve. So the reserve will, so that money that's now sitting in the pool reserve will go into our general operating, yeah. Reserve. So that, yeah. So because we're, the interest rates are so amazing right now and our reserves are, um, decreased quite a bit last year, um, for, for a few reasons. Uh, this was the, the best way to kind of take use of our, the opportunity that we're presented right now with the interest rates being so low. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. You're welcome. And also sorry, just one more thing to note. So the debenture is essentially our portion, but also the provincial grant, that two point four million is, we could have used elsewhere had we not been using it for it. So essentially our contribution is closer to eight million, over seven million. Right. Yes.
Any other questions? Is there a council that I'd like to make a motion? Nope. Counselor Ballas? All right. Thank you very much for that. So the motion has been made. Any comments, questions or debate on it? No, I think, uh, for anyone watching that's wondering why there's not much discussion on this, we've been discussing this for the last three and a half years. So, uh, um, we're all fairly well versed on where we stand with this particular project. And, um, the debenture is just more of a formality to bring it to the finish line. As you can see, the steel's up. As you can see, the steel's up. It's got some structure to it. It's starting to look good. So if there's no comments, questions, or debate, the motion is that council gives second reading to proposed borrowing borrowing by law 2021-10-F is presented. All in favor? Is there a counselor that would like to make the next final motion? Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you. I move that council give third reading to propose borrowing by law 2021-10-F as presented.
All right. Thank you very much. Any comments, questions, or debate on that? Seeing none. So the motion is that council give third reading to propose borrowing borrowing by law 2021-10-F as presented. All in favor? That is carried. So we will now move on to 7.2, appointment of directors for Bioarc Drayton Valley. Ms. Thompson, this is for you once again.
Awesome. So this, just going to the right page here. Is the Villas one, right? Oh, Bioarc. I don't have the. Oh, I do. I do. Sorry. Hot mess. Sorry. So in order for counselors to sit on a on a board, the they the they have to be appointed through a council meeting. And so that's why we're bringing this forward here so we can appoint directors to our Bioarc Board. And the town of Drayton Valley established a Part IX nonprofit company named Bioarc Drayton Valley LTD. The memorandum of association for this company outlines that three elected officials of the town of Drayton Valley are to be directors of the company. Administration is requesting council appoint three members to fill the current vacancies on Bioarc Drayton Valley LTD. And I have had this conversation with council a few months ago, and we have three counselors that volunteered to be on that board.
Sounds good. Just somewhat of a formality. The town does have our Bioarc, and we do need counselors to sit on it. So I think it is still ongoing with looking at the financial statements. There's not a whole lot going on with it, but continues to move forward. So any questions for administration? My understanding is once we have this appointment, we will be having our annual meeting later on this afternoon. So would anyone like to make a motion? Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you. I move that Council Point Mayor Michael Dirksen, Counselor Nancy Dodds, and Counselor Emile Gomana as directors to the Bioarc Drayton Valley Limited for the term expiring on October 27th, 2021.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Any comments, questions, or debates? Seeing none. So the motion is to appoint myself, Counselor Dodds, and Counselor Gomana as directors for Bioarc for the term expiring October 27th, 2021. All in favor? That is carried. All right. 7.3, 2021 Property Tax Forgiveness Request, The Villas at Drayton Valley. So my understanding was there was a delegation last council meeting, which I wasn't able to attend. So this is all new to me.
All right. Well, quick breakdown. So I think you probably are aware that we had some discussions back and forth for about a year, I think. Matt started that conversation probably over a year ago, where initially we we were hoping to be able to move that house for training, for fire training. But for multiple reasons, including costs and just not being able to work it out with the county, we were not able to do that. And so now the, so the Villas went bankrupt shortly after the start of this project. And the mortgage holder, which is CV Portable Accommodations, they, so they foreclosed on the property and they are have been trying to sell for, I think, three years. And they've been having lots of difficulties because no one wants to take on the liability of, like, the outstanding tax liability along with the liability of having to demolish that house because it is, it's, it has to be demolished. So they came forward and were asking for at least a partial tax forgiveness in order to facilitate a sale. They have a buyer, Inova Developments LTD is the 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 buyer. And we went back and forth. At first, they offered $5,000 in exchange, or $5,000 is what they were offering to pay on the outstanding tax liability. And we, administration met with them with the lawyers afterwards. And we went back and forth and we were able to get them up to $15,000. So the agreement is that they will pay $15,000 of the outstanding, towards the outstanding taxes, and have the house demolished by the end of September 2021. So the outstanding taxes on this property right now are $38,263.40. The municipal portion of the taxes are $20,165.67. The penalties are $12,731.79. So the total write off would be $23,263.40.
Okay. All right. Any questions for administration? I'll go with Counselor Gomana and work my way this way.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Just again, the breakdown. So we have a $20,000 municipal taxes and then some education and provincial taxes included, which we've already paid.
Right. So this, the amount, so sorry, I should have covered this. So the $15,000 will cover all of the education and seniors requisitions. It will cover all that plus an extra $9,788 on top of the outstanding requisition, uh, yeah, requisition amounts.
Okay, so again, from my understanding, so we have about $20,000 tax owing to the municipality. We will be getting about $9,000 back. That's kind of the.
So essentially, the municipal taxes is what we can or have the ability to forgive. So we have 20,000 is the municipal portion. And we're, yeah, so I'm not sure. Sorry, I.
Sorry, have, you know, are they taking care of the the education and?
Yes.
They are going to take.
Yeah. So the education, the outstanding amounts are only $5,211.29. Oh, yeah, because we've paid that amount. We've paid the requisitions for the last three or four years. So what happens when we pay the requisitions? And so it's called an over or under. So we don't get that, we've paid it, we don't get, so if we forgive a school or or senior requisitions, it comes out of our pockets. But but we we are getting the full amount for that. We've already paid it.
Sorry, we are getting 15,000.
Yes.
And then they are getting, they are giving on top of that.
Oh, no.
Okay.
No, sorry. 15,000 is what they're offering, which will cover that plus an extra $9,000. Yeah, sorry.
Counselor Ballas?
Thank you. I totally agree with this position. The only thing I would like to see is in the motion that we put some timelines. And for example, if the house is to be demolished, that we put the timeline of September 30th. And that we also include in the motion that we receive $15,000.
Anything else, Counselor Ballas? Is that everything?
Two.
Counselor Wheeler, did you have anything this side? Counselor Dodds, I know you had a question.
I did. I have two questions. Do we have a demolish statement that was reported? And if so, by who? And do we have record of this? When you talked about that the red house need to be demolished? Is that my first question?
Whether we have like a recommendation of it?
Well, yeah, who is who is saying that the?
Our fire department and our Public Works and our health inspector.
So there was an inspection done and that and that was the determination of?
I don't know if an official just, maybe Tom can speak to that. I'm not sure.
Okay. And then and then Adam, the health inspector as well, had looked at it and condemned it? Okay. And then my second question is, I know that it's coming to to council now. But could we possibly make a request for Inova Developments to reinvest the remainder of the money as a donation back into the community? Well, there would be an extra 15,000 because the total is 30, right? That of taxes?
So I I understand the request. So in terms of the full, it would then be 23,000 in terms of the remaining taxes owing. And so the council is asking if we can approach to see if they can make a contribution.
A contribution to the town, whether it went to the pool or our education or a park or something to give back into the community if we're because I mean, this is a, this is a company that, you know, my understanding is when they presented is that if we give the tax forgiveness and pass this, then they could potentially come in and and create a big development there, right? And and then they would be paying taxes to the community. So I would like to have that conversation or to say that, you know, what kind of donation or or give back. I think that when we're looking at, we've had a lot of companies come to us and ask for task for our tax forgiveness, right? And there has to be, I think, some sort of criteria or standards we've had when we're going to the next the next request for decision, there is a donation that's going to be made, right? And I think that there should be consideration when these tax forgiveness requests are coming in is that, you know, if the if the municipality is willing to do this, then what are you willing to do, right? Because this isn't a business that, this is a business that is going to profit, right? That is going to continue to develop and grow. So what what could you give back to the community? They're not located in Drayton Valley. They're a business that's outside of the community as well, right? So I think that it's, you know, a good idea to say, what else could you give back to the community if we're forgiving this?
So for, in terms of just a response on, we can certainly approach on that basis. If council wishes to have that more of a stipulation or condition, that would have to be built into the resolution.
Counselor Ballas?
I I appreciate what you're saying. However, I would hate to see us interfere in the sale not happening. And then all we're going to do is have additional tax arrears. This is a company that will hopefully eventually develop that area, and we will get some tax dollars out of it versus getting tax arrears. So, you know, I'm totally in favor of this motion, and I don't, I wouldn't want to push any more buttons. We already got them up from 5,000 to 15,000, and I think we should grab it and let them go ahead and do their development, get that red building demolished and go forward.
Counselor Gomana?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just from my understanding, again, during those discussions, after demolishing the building, have they given us any timelines when they are willing to start a new development or, you know, start something happening there?
Thank you, Counselor. The presentation from Inova Developments at the last council meeting just spoke to the fact that right now it's on their inventory. There has been no indication of any development at this point in time. But certainly as we present information and as, and I'm sure they'll be watching in terms of the the economic growth within the community, that would just be their normal business approach.
Does administration know how much it would cost to demolish those buildings?
Yes, thank you. We did have an estimate and I seem to recall that it was around $12,000 to demolish. That that was the estimate that we've been given. That's our local number. But the number that was given to us by CNV and Inova was closer to $20,000. So that was one of their concerns was the cost of demolition.
Okay, so I'm just. Okay. All right. Well, I'll leave my statement till after a motion is made. Any other questions for administration? Is there a counsel that would like to make a motion on this? Counselor McGee? Sorry, Counselor McGee, keep your mic on and unfortunately start from the beginning.
And I'll start from the beginning. The council approved the forgiveness of $10,376.96 of municipal taxes outstanding and $12,886.44 of penalties outstanding for tax roll or 6202000 on the condition that the property is sold and the house is demolished. And we stipulate to 15,000 and September 30th.
All right. So the recording secretary has that. So the motion has been made. So I guess I'll just start the, the reason I asked how much it would cost to demolish is I'm just looking at the potential avenues of how this could move forward. You know, we accept this and assuming we don't accept it, we can send it to a tax sale, which I believe at that point, I don't know if there'd be too much interest in it since it's been actively for sale for a number of years. And then it becomes a responsibility of the town. And so, you know, while, yes, we're forgiving taxes here. The other outcome is is we take over that and we have to spend the 12 to $20,000 to demolish it ourselves. And then actively try to find buyers for a property, which could be years down the road. So, you know, ultimately, at the end of the day, while, you know, we hate to to forgive taxes, I do think in the best interest of our community, this is something I will support. Just looking at the alternatives that we're faced with. Anyone else? Counselor Gomana?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, just my understanding, trying to figure out what's the best outcome for the community with this one and also the next one coming. So tax sale, if we go on that route, we would have to put this for a tax sale. And we can demolish it or do whatever with the building that's there. But then we can recoup that money back with the with the tax.
If we can sell it.
If we can sell it, right? Or if we decided to have our own development, which is, is that possible as well?
No. We can't develop it unless we buy it. We have to pay fair market value for it if we buy it. We have that option, but or wait 15 years, yes. And in 15 years, you'll have many, many, many years of tax revenues that you give up if if you do that, go that route. So if if we did go for a tax sale, we have to list it for as close to fair market value as we can get it, as as we can make it, I guess. And then if we don't get any interest in it, then essentially it becomes like the title comes to our name, but with a tax foreclosure bracket on it. And then we can continue, we have to continue or trying to sell it, but it has to be fair market value. We can buy it ourselves. We have to transfer the fair market value though to. So so essentially, we can only get out what we are owed. That's all that we can get out of that property. And the difference between doing it this way and doing a tax sale route is that the tax sale route, it costs a lot of administration time, which is often necessary. But if we have an alternative, then the alternative is almost always better because in this case, like Mr. Mayor pointed out, that we would, if we took the title to it, we cannot, it's not really ours, but it is our responsibility. So we would be forced to demolish it and which would come out of our pockets right now until we can sell it. And we'd be foregoing the tax revenues that are going to be coming in once this company buys it.
Right, yeah. No, I'm, you know, I understand the logistics if we do that. The, my concern is that we have few other properties that in similar state. And we are kind of setting up precedents if we go on this route in my mind. And I don't know if this is the right course of action for the other properties out there as well. So that's where my struggle is.
I studied the tax sale process a lot in the last month, just to be prepared going forward. And from, in my opinion, And from in my opinion, tax sales always the last course of action. If we have any other way that we can do it is beneficial because we can only, even if we make money, let's say it sells for fair market value, we don't make money on it. All we can take is the thirty-eight thousand that's owed to us. That's all we can take. So essentially, we become the party that now has to try to sell and all we can get out of it is what we're owed. So the 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 bank will get the rest in this case if we went to a tax sale. So we're in in the situation that we have in front of us financially and administrative efforts, we are both winning in this situation. Will it always be the case? I can't say for sure, but I can confidently say that almost always we would try to avoid a tax sale if we can. However, we don't have really have an option to avoid a tax sale if we don't like, the MGA states that if a property is so far in arrears, we have to do a tax sale. We don't have another option. It just happens that we do in this case because it falls within the timeline. So that's pretty much what why we are very happy that we do have an alternative at this point.
Thank you. Counselor Wheeler?
I just wanted to say quick that I also know we've been having trouble with people breaking into the house and making a mess of it and our CMP going and besides our staff time, there's a lot of community time that's involved in that as well as it being the only unit on that property. There was residents that had concerns around it and everything else. So for me, this is more than a win-win for sure.
Counselor Dodds?
For me, I can appreciate the proposal and the and the outcome of this. When you talk about all we get out of this is our tax dollars, I I think that that's all we should get, right? We shouldn't if we're going to tax, so we shouldn't be expecting anymore. So to me, that doesn't really, it doesn't really weigh on my decision at all. I do think that there is other buildings and properties and businesses and things that are very similar to this. And I would like to see something else and I can't support this or be in favor of this because of that condition. I'd like to see something else donated or given back to the community in return from this company.
On the tax rule, so it's currently assessed at two hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. I feel like that's probably the value of the land. I'm just telling the tax rule that we have quoted here. It's not in the notes. It's just it's public information that you can look at at the Town and Drayton Valley's website.
I can't, I can grab my computer and look at it for two minutes.
No, it's fine. I'm just thinking that, you know, if even at the end of the day.
I think it was around two hundred thousand.
Yeah, so even at the end of the day, if, you know, if we do nothing and continues to collect back taxes or moving forward and doing something, I mean, Inova Developments is still going to have to pay tax. Like they're not just say, hey, we get this, we don't have to pay future tax. It's there's still a value associated to that. And so it's going to be thirty-one hundred dollars a year that they're going to have to pay just even if it demolishes a value on the land. And I'm assuming at this, that's would probably be the value of the land is my guess.
Is right now at twenty, twenty or twenty-five thousand on on the assessment, which shouldn't even be that high, but yeah. So most of that is the land, yes.
Okay, so one of these scenarios where we move forward and we will start getting future taxations and any development will only increase that. Counselor Wheeler?
Yeah, just wanted to say that I I really like Counselor Dodds's idea. For me, this is here and we need to make a decision today is the only thing. I get that, but I think moving forward, that's a really great idea when we're looking at some of these situations potentially, especially on the if we are forgiving any amount of the actual outstanding, not just the penalties, but that that should be donated back somehow to the community. I think that's a really neat idea, so.
Maybe that can be a conversation that administration has, knowing that there's nothing that we can formally do to ensure and to be honest with you, I'm not even sure if a municipality has the ability to. I mean, I guess we can create any agreement that we want to, but I don't know if we can put that in there. Who knows?
There might be something that we could do in terms of when development, if they actually do start development, that that's the time that they actually take a look at a contribution. And I think that would be fair. But I mean, that is something we can we can build in to say, okay, maybe not now, but when you do develop, that's when we would be looking for that contribution. So yeah, we can certainly have that discussion and that itself can be sort of written in as a as an agreement if they agree to.
Counselor Dodds?
I just want to add that, yeah, unfortunately, like you said, that it's the timing, right? So I mean, I'd like to say, yes, I can be in favor of this, but for me, it's the timing, right? And it's setting that precedence for other, I guess, businesses and other proposals coming forward. So it's just, it's just timing today.
Okay, so if there's nothing else, the motion is that council approve the forgiveness of the municipal taxes and outstanding penalties. And also in the motion is that demolition does have to be done by September thirtieth and we receive the fifteen thousand dollars, just stipulations for this to move forward. If there's no other comments, questions, I'll ask all in favor, all opposed. That is carried.
On a on the opposed vote, is that recorded? Unless you ask it to be recorded.
It must be registered.
One of the counselors would have had to ask it to be recorded, so. Right. Okay, so let's move forward. We'll get one more decision item in before our break. Seven point four, twenty twenty-one property tax forgiveness request for Valley Power Corp. on behalf of Metal Next offered to purchase. Ms. Thompson?
Okay, another tax forgiveness request. So I think everyone's very familiar with Valley Power lands. We have, right, okay, let me just see. So we have two tax rules that require tax forgiveness on. One is the linear taxes and one is just the property taxes. Metal Neck Salvage LTD is offering to pay the Town of Drayton Valley a total of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to cover a portion of the outstanding property taxes and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to contribute sponsorship dollars to the town's education initiative and the new aquatic facility. The total outstanding taxes for this property are currently nine hundred and forty thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-four cents. The total outstanding property taxes are four hundred and twenty-two dollars, four hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars and ninety-nine cents in penalties. And the outstanding linear taxes are five hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and ten cents with one hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-eight cents being in penalties. With the offer presented to the Town of Drayton Valley, the total tax forgiveness would be seven hundred and sixty-five dollars, two hundred and ninety-four cents and start over, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-four cents.
Yes, that's one that just keeps going around and round and round. So we have, over the past number of years, received various offers and this is, I guess, the latest one and I think it's probably the best one that we've received to date, maybe, I'm not sure. I guess formally, anyway. So is there any questions for administration? Counselor Bellis?
Two things. Number one, do we know if this is an ironclad deal?
Thank you, Counselor. Nothing has been signed to you. Nothing has been authorized as an agreement. This is something that we are asking council to give us direction so that we can go back and determine whether it's a an offer that we can accept and present back to Metal Next. So nothing is solid at this point.
Yeah, so this offer actually has nothing, is not contingent, or is it contingent upon this being part of the deal to Valley Power?
Thank you, Counselor. Metal Next is looking for this relief on the taxes in order to present us with an offer. Now, again, too, when I say present us, it's actually to Valley Power. Again, too, it's one of those things where they have to negotiate, but in order for them to negotiate with Valley Power, they're having to get an indication from the town as to whether we are willing to relieve some of the taxes.
Right, so I'm just wondering, if we're going to go with the motion, how we're going to stipulate that condition and also the fact that we should be receiving a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars as well, because that's not in the motion either.
Ms. Treson, maybe I can add just a little bit to the conversation. I had the opportunity along with Mr. Olenek and Ms. Carter to to visit the site in Camrose on Monday. And in that discussion with the the owner, the the indication was that we have to make a decision here before they can move forward. So if the town says, we think that that's a reasonable thing, we can, we can accept that, then they go back and say to the owners of Valley Power, saying, yes, we're ready to put whatever money they they are putting forward to to buy that piece of property. That then is sent to the receiver. The receiver decides whether they're going to accept and then it comes back to us. And I think that's where we will begin our discussions about, okay, it looks like it's ironclad and now here's the distribution of funds for the town. So today, I think what we're making a decision on is whether we would forgive the taxes and it's it's by no means ironclad. It falls apart at the receiver, it falls apart at the receiver and we're back at page one. So there's, there's nothing more we can do other than, in my view, we need to say, give it a go.
Yeah, I appreciate what you're saying. I just want to make sure we protect our position, that if their position changes and all of a sudden now there's additional money being paid to the Valley Power Group. Now, we've already committed ourselves to this. So I have no problems with this as long as we protect our position, saying that it's going to be subject to the completion of the sale as it was originally presented.
Can can I ask Bill a question?
Okay, I'll let you, if it's directly related to what he was saying.
So what you're saying is because Metal Next hasn't put in a proposal to purchase, right? So this is, I guess, just a, an offer that if if this were to go through, would we forgive the taxes? So there's not really any, any sort of agreement. I get what you're saying, yeah, that.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure we protect our position.
Yeah, yeah.
Counselor Gomana?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I have similar concerns like the last session on this one as well. You know, how much of a land do they need for their operations? Like we have about thirty-five acres, I believe, on the the Valley Power land, if I'm not mistaken.
Currently, the land that they are sitting on in Camrose is about eleven acres. So that's about what they need, ten to eleven acres. Their view is is that they would, that they would be a bit smaller than that, I think, to start. And then they would, their idea is to subdivide the land.
Thank you, Counselor McGee. In in my view, again, I think, you know, going back to the thought process we had before, maybe we need to renegotiate with them a little bit further. We need to, we are waiving seven hundred and sixty-five thousand in back taxes. Again, a donation back to the community for the rest, maybe. Also, I have the same concerns as Counselor Bellis has. You know, if if this is going to pan out, you know, how much of the the business that they're going to set up, if if it employs and if it continues, we are doing a, we have taken the right decision. But if it doesn't, then we are waiving seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar taxes and we are, we're not sure where we will end up. So the other, thinking out loud, the other thing I was thinking is that can we have an agreement with them saying every year in operation that we will remove or waive a hundred thousand of taxes each year? Also, the other thing I was thinking is about the the land they need. If they need eleven acres and we have thirty-five there, can can we have an agreement of some kind of a land purchase or land donation towards the town from the rest as well?
I can add this because my question at the boardroom table was, are we negotiating? Are we still in negotiations or are we are we done with that? The answer back was, we're not negotiating. We, we're, we're asking this question and the town either is there or not. So what we have to be very clear on is what we have, nothing. And so if you listen to Ms. Thompson as she spells it out in a fifteen-year process and we're losing these this amount of taxes, it just sits there. And so if you have some interest, in my view, my worry was only where the the property sits. I went down there last night trying to listen for decibels and noise and those kinds of things and looking at the distance and 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 the particular spot of the property. I think it would fit well. I haven't talked to the neighbors, that being the cement folks and the trucking company, but I I think what we have to realize is if you keep going back to the table and then they go, well, listen, we, we got a spot up across the river, which they originally had found and we're going to be highway access. And they weren't thinking of this land at all, but they're now thinking about it. And the reason they're thinking about it, in my view, is that it's an opportunity and an opportunity to subdivide some land, to do this and do this and do this, right? We have currently zero tax dollars, zero opportunity to regain those tax dollars. It goes back to the discussion we just had on the house. What do we got? So let's, and and it isn't.
This does sound a lot like debate, which should be made after a motion, but. So I guess, so if we're not ready for the motion, let's talk about the motion that we should be making and then we can debate that afterward. Counselor Dodds?
So yeah, I definitely think that this is more of an attractive proposal, you know, and one of the better ones we've definitely had that have come to us. You know, there's a portion that will cover the outstanding property taxes and then there's contributions to education and the new aquatic facility. So I like that, the giving back to the community and things like that. So just a question and just to get a little bit more clarity of kind of where Bill's going, that there's not really any, I guess, what word am I looking for? Not really any guarantee. So hypothetically, if we if we make this motion, right, that that we're we're going ahead with this motion and let's say then that Metal Next doesn't put in a proposal to purchase through Valley Power Corp., then this is really null and void because they, there's nothing to own, right? So that's kind of, I guess, a guarantee in itself, but I think that you're right that I don't know how you could word that in the motion or if there's something else that could be be added for that, right?
Just in terms of the the resolution itself, I mean, we do recognize a hundred and fifty thousand. What we're not recognizing is a hundred and seventy-five to to deal with. It's it's assumed, but it's not clear. So again, too, if we want to just simply say buy the hundred and seventy-five thousand contribution, it means that they're not having to pay seven hundred and sixty-five of them.
Counselor Wheeler?
Okay, thank you. I move that council approve the forgiveness of seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-four cents of property tax, linear taxes and penalties outstanding for the tax rules five three one zero four five zero zero and five three one zero four six zero zero with the contingency that Metal Neck Salvage Limited is the owner and pays the hundred and fifty thousand in sponsorships to the town. and pays the 150,000 in sponsorships to the town.
By saying we're going to forgive 765, it implies that they have to pay 175 to cover the remainder of the taxes. Is that, we can add it in there as well, but that was the reasoning behind that. What if they don't pay the 175?
It just recognizes the 175 is still on the property tax. So when it goes to Valley Power, in order for them to accept the deal, they have to, they already know that, well, wait a minute, there's still 175 on, so you have to, in order to buy that property, you are taking on that debt.
Can you add to your motion, and a total of 175 to cover a portion of the outstanding property taxes? That's the portion of just the municipal portion, that's not? No? That's the school that, everything?
We've stopped, the linear taxes haven't been, we've stopped accumulating linear taxes for several years now anyways. So that's mostly just penalties occurring on that anyways.
Okay, so the motion has been made. Unless someone wants to make a friendly amendment, it is as it's read. The understanding is that the $175,000 is included, without us only forgiving $765,000 of it. Counselor Dodds?
Can we have the motion read back?
Okay, all right. So now we can debate it. I go Counselor Ballas, and then Counselor Gomana?
Thank you. Just for clarity, I would prefer to see the total tax forgiveness, whether it's 900 and some thousand, and that 175,000 is to be applied. So that there's a commitment in our motion that they have to pay 175. That it's in a motion.
Before that goes further, just one point of clarification on this. Because we are seeing penalties on the taxes, depending on the timeline that this takes to actually negotiate and formulate any sort of agreement between Valley Power lawyers and Metal Next, that actually might increase. That 175 might actually be a little bit more. So what we're saying is that we are forgiving a certain amount, anything, right now it's 175,000. But depending on whether it's one or two months, three months, four months, those penalties will still be accruing. So we have to recognize, we can't really put that number in there. So it's implied that the remaining portion of taxes on that is the responsibility of Metal Next, should they become the owner. And by Counselor Wheeler's addition of, as the owner recognizes that if they are the owner, they're taking on the responsibility of the remaining tax debt.
Counselor Wheeler, do you have a comment to that?
Tiny question. In terms of a technicality, when anyone sells the property, don't they have to pay the taxes? Like, isn't that part of the transaction requirement when you sell the property?
Yes, it is.
Right? Like, they can't just be like, oh, we're not going to pay that.
Yeah, and that's why Valley Power has, that's why it's, we have to work with Valley Power on the sale because Valley Power technically would have to sell it for no less than what the taxes are. And there's, there's no way they can, so then they have to, we have to work with them to say, like, how much we're willing to forgive to even facilitate the sale.
Okay, thank you.
That's right. I have Counselor Gomana, and then we'll move back to Counselor Ballas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Ballas, for giving me the opportunity. You, I'm just, again, just wanted to lay out the thought process I'm having regarding to this decision. When it comes to the location of the land itself, I believe it's one of the prime locations in Great Valley, which is, you know, close by, that we can have some kind of a development or business come to town. On top of that, I think, you know, I'm thinking, if it was through my business that, you know, owned that property, what would I do? You know, would I write off $700,000 worth of debt? Or how would I take, you know, going forward with negotiations? In my mind, I would negotiate further to get the best deal out for the community and try to, I guess, have a better deal. Given that they only need 11 acres for the operations, there's 35 acres in the area, I would negotiate further to at least get some land to the town. Or also make sure that the continuity of the business is there without writing off 700,000. Right now, can we have a negotiation, an agreement with them saying, you are bringing a business to town, that's excellent, you're bringing jobs to town, that's superb. But, you know, we need to have that continuity. We can't have you operate for a couple of years and 700,000 gone. Or, you know, that doesn't happen at all. So I would negotiate with them further, saying that, you know, we can waive your 700,000 taxes, but it need to be every year that you are an operator, we will deduct a certain amount. And that ensures that, you know, that continuity is secure. That's where I stand. Thank you.
Counselor Ballas, did you have something?
Yeah, I'm still concerned about the 175,000. And the reason being, because I think that 175,000 would have to be paid to the receiver and not to the town. And the receiver would then determine, we're in the first position. So it eventually would come to us, but whether there would be costs involved in that, I'm not sure. So somehow, I would like to see that that 175,000 is being paid to the town. Because it would, right now, the way it's worded, that would, to me, would go to the receiver because they're the one in control of it.
Oh, that, the motion won't change where the money goes, like, how the process plays out, unfortunately, like, that, it'll take time for that to come through to us. But I don't believe would be contingent on this motion because they're not buying the land from us.
I realize that, but they also stated that that was to be paid in, I think, over three years or something, was it not? Was there not some stipulations that they're, in their offer?
So a friendly amendment, I don't think that's going to matter one way or the other. The fact remains is you have to, you have to start the process, they have to get to the receiver. And I don't know if that's, talking to them, they would begin their work today. But they can't do that because the receiver has to accept any offer. Now, the receiver also, in their minds, we have outstanding debt to other community members, and the receiver has to go through all of that in their own minds. And then the receiver has to make a decision. So all of that could take months. I have no idea. But a friendly amendment on the 175, Counselor Ballas, that doesn't hinder anything. You just have to start the process, and if it doesn't get accepted, we remain where we are today. Simple.
It's just that, it was their timeline, Tom, that I have a concern about this. I think they said they were going to pay so much dollars per year.
You're right. Over a three-year period, in increments of $58,000, $3,000, $58,000, that's in the, that's-
And if that was the case, I'm not sure how the receiver would release the property.
Both were in there, in time increments, three months, three years.
Both were in there. So the 150 was $50,000 each year for the three years. And for the 175, it was 58, 333, for three years. With respect to timeline, again, too, as Counselor McGee mentioned, that's a process that we are not in control of.
And also, this, all this would be written into a legal contract anyway, once the, this just puts that one step forward so that we can even go to that next step, so.
Mr. Treason?
Yes, just in response to Counselor Gomana's question with respect to the opportunity to table this, we were given 45 days from June 22nd to address and respond back to Metal Next.
Yeah, so our next council meeting would put it closer to 60 days, I think. Like, August 18th is our next council meeting. Counselor Dodds?
So then the next step would be then the proposal for Metal Next to Valley Power, and then the remainder creditors, that would be dealt with between the creditors and Valley Power, right? Or the-
Yes, that is aside from us.
Aside from us, okay. And then also, to Emila's comment, you know, maybe there's the opportunity, because once this goes through, then I'm just wondering how the lands are amended right now, and if there would need to be an amendment or a business proposal that would come forward? Because I imagine there'll be public consultation, right? And there'll be questions and things like that. So maybe there would be the opportunity to include some of those other conditions, right, that you had mentioned earlier, once that, it gets to that stage. I think that there'll be another opportunity. That's the way I look at it.
Okay, Counselor Ballas?
I want to see this go through, but I think that in that motion, we have to say, okay, as it was presented, that the motion has to read that they will pay in increments of whatever it is, over a three-year period. Because this motion is assuming that they're going to pay it all, and they're not.
So would someone like to make a friendly amendment?
I would love to make a friendly amendment to whoever would accept a friendly.
Okay, what, all right, so we've talked about this 100 times. Either someone makes a friendly amendment, or you vote on this particular motion.
This is about the tax forgiveness? This is only one tiny piece. This isn't the contract. This isn't the whole thing. That will come after all of this. This is just one piece they need to be able to put into that contract to figure it out. This still doesn't mean that we've agreed to sign off on everything else they're going to do. So, exactly, so I'm coming from moving forward with this as is, and see where we settle out at after with the other details.
Counselor Gomana?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate Counselor Dodds and Counselor Wheeler's comments. But if that's the case, then I think we are putting the cart before the horse. You know, we are jumping the gun here. If the deal hasn't been made, and, you know, the connection hasn't been done, the proposal is not there, I don't know why we are doing this right now. We should be having those conversations first. And, you know, we can give consensus for a tax waiver in some form, and then they can continue their discussions. And then they can bring it back, you know, when there's a concrete go-forward, then we can make a motion and do all of that, in my mind. And also, I think the layout of the agreement, the deal between the town and the entity should be done ahead of time without assuming things that if we do this, and then we can do this after. In my mind, we should be having those conversations ahead of time as well.
If I could address that, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Gomana, thank you. Just to clarify, this is the process that needs to happen first. So we are going through the first step that needs to occur. So understand that there is no proposal in front of the lawyers of the Valley Power simply because Metal Next needs to know whether this is going to be something that is permitted by Town Council in order to present the offer to Valley Power. So in terms of process, this is the correct process. In terms of agreements with respect to anything else, as Counselor Dodds indicated, yes, they will have to go through a development and building permit process. Opportunity for a number of discussions. It can also be the opportunity to address any concerns that the community might have with respect to noise, visibility, emissions, et cetera. So everything in terms of what Metal Next needs to do, they just need to take a look at saying, what is our proposal to Valley Power lands? If they work through that proposal, and if the receiver is saying that this is a deal that they're willing to accept, and they've dealt with anybody on their list within the receivership, then it's something that comes back to us for a proposal. At that time, we can address a matter of other items. With respect to, we can say that council approved the forgiveness of so much in taxes minus the minimum of 175,000, because I have to say minimum because it could be more. Just offering a suggestion in terms of that friendly amendment.
Counselor Ballas?
We do need to specify the amount that we're forgiving because without the receiver knowing what that proportion is or what that amount is, there's no discussion with Valley Power and Metal Next.
Okay. All right, so no friendly amendments. We're going to move forward here. So the motion was that council approve the forgiveness of the property taxes, linear taxes, outstanding penalties, under the condition that they're the owner and they pay $150,000 of sponsorship to the town as outlined in the motion that was read back to us. If nothing else, I will ask a question. All in favor? All opposed? Too late? That is carried, and we will call a break for five minutes, understanding that we do have a delegation in our other meeting at 11:30. So I'm going to try to keep the rest of this moving forward quickly. Our meeting back to order. Seven point five dust suppression policy. Mr. Olnick?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Today, administration is bringing forth to this esteemed council a dust suppression policy that we definitely recommend. There has been a lot of service requests in this regard. However, just due to the wildcard nature, to speak candidly about it, we recommend putting in a very structured and defined protocol to offer this service. And just to kind of address the fact that dust control is a bit of a safety concern and also a nuisance concern. So I, what I did is I contacted Grand Prairie, Pinoka, Clearwater, Town of Edson, a variety of, well, basically local government agencies of varying sizes to see what they do and actually get copies of their policy. And the one that I'm presenting to you today is very much coincides with kind of the standard on what most people or most government agencies follow. And then also on the last page, how I'd like the application to look, just so that we can advertise it to the public if council does indeed pass this and also give a deadline before final budget, so it allows us to have a better control method for, for budgeting purposes, just so that there's a little bit more of a handle on it. So I open any questions that you may have?
Thank you very much. Any questions for administration? Council Wheeler?
Just, do we need to amend the fee schedule?
We don't have to for now, but I would definitely recommend that every year for the fee schedule that we would kind of update it just with equipment costs and the, and the cost of the liquid calcium. So I would definitely try to put that in there.
There's no other questions? Is there a member of council that'd like to make a motion?
Councilor Mayor, I would make that motion that council approved dust suppression policy T dash zero-one, dash two-one as presented.
All right, thank you very much. Any comments, questions, or debate on that?
So I did ask a question during the break, Mr. Olnick, about whether or not this got passed through to the public and at public input. And so if he could answer that question. Secondly, is the, expanding on how much we do in comparison to others, I think that's important, too.
Thank you, Councilor McGee. So for your, sorry, your first question was?
The public.
The public. So it, it's more through the service requests. I mean, Councilor Ballas directed one to me. There, there definitely is an appetite for dust suppression, but we have a lot of individuals that are willing to pay for it or realize that they've paid for it in the past during our annexed roads, also due to the fact that this, you know, has been advertised on our social media and that. So far, I haven't heard, my department hasn't heard anything about this. But I have, like I said, went to other municipalities and just kind of seen what they're looking at. And a, a couple municipalities were a bit surprised at the amount that we do. Because Town of Edson's, for instance, they do like their airport road, their golf course road, kind of four main roads, and that's about it. Where kind of the amount that we've spent in the past varies quite a bit. Twenty sixteen, I recall, doing about fifty thousand meters of dust suppression, which was quite an insurmountable cost. So I believe you remember that, Councilor Wheeler. So it's, like I said, it definitely talking to these other municipalities, they said you should definitely implement a method of control just so that it's easier to budget for, it's easier to kind of respond positively to these service requests. So.
And when you talk about dust suppression, that's not dust elimination?
Correct. Thank you, Councilor McGee. There seems to be a bit of a misconception is because everybody thinks you spray it once and it should take care of it for the whole year. And I've talked to Brazos County and Clearwater, and they said that's a very strong misconception because the, once you apply the dust suppression, the more traffic you could get on it, and even the more heat, it breaks down the ceiling of the road. So you, we cannot guarantee that it'll last all year just due to the weather and traffic conditions. So it, they basically told me it's a unrealistic expectation.
Okay, Council Wheeler?
Are they required to pay along with their application, or do we invoice them after? What does that look like?
Thank you, Council Wheeler. I would recommend that they would pay at application, because in the policy, it states that, you know, once you pay and once it's applied, we will make sure that it's maintained through the year. It's just aggressive requests or maybe preliminary requests is what they would have to pay for.
Okay. All right, so the motion is that council approved the dust suppression policy T dash zero-one, dash twenty-one as presented. If there's nothing else, all in favor? That is carried. Seven point six, community grants, third quarter allocation. Ms. Treason?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I don't think so.
So the town continues its community grant program through the course of the year. As typical of each funding year, twenty thousand dollars is available in the course of a year. We divide that up into four quarters. So for each quarter, five thousand dollars exists for contributions to organizations that host community events. For this particular quarter, which the deadline was July thirtieth, there was one eligible application for council's purview, and that was from Elevated Experience Campaign Society, the Cruising for a Cause. Now, recognizing that this was just recently held, does not restrict the council from making a decision on the contribution. And as well to three applicants that came underneath Town Administration's purview were awarded. One that had been received was not eligible, but three awards were granted, and that was from GPPR for their Parks Day, which again was just this past weekend. Pembina Pipeline is hosting an outdoor movie event. Again, just clarification, it is generally for nonprofit organizations, but it does give us the ability within the policy to recognize that business organizations or profit organizations can actually host these community events if they indeed are specific to the community. And then, of course, the last one for the DV Historical Society and a museum, or again, two other movie events. So looking to occupy the, each, almost every month with an outdoor movie. So with those three grants awarded underneath the purview of Town Administration, there's a total of three thousand and two dollars and fifty cents remaining in the third quarter allocation of community events grant for the one application under council's purview.
Okay, any questions for administration? Is there a council that'd like to make a motion? Council Ballas? So you've ordered them more than they've requested? We could carry over a balance until next term. Okay, so the motion is for three thousand, two dollars and fifty cents. Any comments, questions, or debate on that? I mean, I'd prefer just to give them twenty-five hundred and carry over the rest. Councilor Gomana?
Can I make a friendly amendment, Council Ballas? Twenty-four hundred instead of, okay.
Okay. He said no. Okay, so if there's any comments, questions, debates, all in favor? All opposed? Just me? That is carried. We are now on to seven point seven, Omniplex ICE fees, which I believe was tabled last meeting. Is there some kind of a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just speak to the.
Do we need to untable it first? Let me, I just want to make sure.
Yes, yes.
Just give my glasses here. Okay, so is there a member of council, Council Wheeler?
Thank you. I move that council take from the table motion number one thirteen slash twenty-one.
All in favor? That is carried. So is motion number two, just because I wasn't at that last meeting, is that the motion that was made? And then was tabled? Okay, so, all right, so we do have a motion. An active motion. Okay, then council moved that, county council approved twenty twenty-one ICE rental fees as presented. All right. So maybe you could start with just refreshing what as presented is, and we can go from there.
So yeah, so we have put forth, I guess, two separate rates. One was the three percent increase, which we feel mandatory, necessary at this point. We've also put together a proposal to increase twenty-five percent to offset the cost that, with the reduction in Brazos County grant money that we get from them. So there are two, two different, I guess, two separate rates there that we can raise them, three percent or the, I guess, twenty-eight percent in total. And we would be recommending to raise it to twenty-eight percent to, again, offset those costs of Brazos County's reduction in funding. I don't think this, do we talk about the rebates at this point? If those are part of a motion to offer rebates to town residents or not? But we've also have several options for rebating certain groups.
So is the intention of that motion there just for the ICE rates, or did it have any intention for rebates?
The intention is for the rates itself. The rates actually show what the amounts would be. In terms of the rebate, we've recommended, we could actually even post that, but because there was some discrepancy between how we were going to deal with the rebates, it means that the rebate, there's a fluctuation in the rebate. So if we were to look at this motion in its entirety, it is just simply accepting the ICE rental rates and speaks nothing to the rebate. Not too sure how we would want to word that rebate.
Okay, Council Ballas, do you have something you want to add? Okay, all right, so are we able to? Is there any appetite on voting on rebates at this particular meeting, or do we just want to vote on this particular?
So, yes, sorry, Mr. Mayor, just again thinking out loud, but then how, how do we proceed with the rebate portion of things? There will be another motion coming back?
I would recommend certainly that we take a look at a motion for the rebates. We need to rec, we need to make sure the community understands town residents are receiving a rebate, and that should occur at this meeting, because then it allows administration to bring something forward to each of the groups. I'm just thinking in my mind here in terms of the wording, because we are dealing with minor hockey differently than we will be dealing with figure skating or men's rec or fun hockey or any of those groups. But what we can do is to say that the rebate in terms of not exceeding a twenty-five percent maximum might be a, like a twenty-five percent rebate on the new fees for town residents. And to authorize administration to work with each group. I don't have anything in my head right now that can actually clearly specify, and I don't know if you've brought anything forward on this.
Well, as we presented before, the, the different options for the rates with the three-year average, we would obviously use the numbers from this year. We wouldn't use that three-year average. And, or for minor hockey, we would simply give them back what they paid last year for simplicity reasons. Now, I get the other option is no rebate, which I know has been thrown around as well. So that would be up to you, fine people.
Okay. All right, Council Gomana?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I agree with Ms. Treason's comment, you know, and thinking about, as Councilor McGee always says, the headline, right? You know, when we pass this, what will be the headline? So I think headline should be both. So we need to figure out the rebate portion as well.
Council Dodds?
So this motion is just for the, the ICE rental rates. Is it an increase of three percent or twenty-five percent?
The three percent increase is an increase that would be on every single one of those fees, so that even a town resident, they have to recognize. So any booking that we have with a group, it will be a three percent increase automatically for everyone. So any booking that we have with a group, it will be a three percent increase automatically for everyone, just simply because we have never increased the fees for, well, never, it hasn't been increased for quite a few years. And in order for us to keep up with our normal operating costs, we need to see an increase. The twenty-five percent is to recognize that in order for us to gain some cost recovery, minus, of course, taking into consideration what Brazzo County does contribute, because they are contributing some to that. So that twenty-five percent actually took into account what we needed to see back as a contribution, recognizing that county residents then would be paying that full amount, and town residents would receive the rebate.
So because the motion doesn't speak to the rebate, the motion would speak to twenty-eight percent then of increasing fees, correct? Wouldn't be the three percent as well?
Not the three percent as well. Like we said, the three percent applies to everybody, just because on a normal given budgeting process, we would be normally looking at an increase overall.
So without having the component of the rebate in here, that's a crazy motion that we're increasing our ICE fees for twenty-five percent, in my opinion.
Hey, Counselor Wheeler?
Yeah, but I don't know why someone wouldn't just make a second motion that we request administration to do a twenty-five percent rebate to all town residents and bring back their proposed program at the next meeting.
Why can't we do it on the same motion?
That one's already been made, and I don't...
So we would, we could, we could do friendly amendments, or we could just defeat this motion and start all over again.
Or just make two motions.
We could approve this one and then make another vote.
Yes. If, if I can make a recommendation on that, yes, I think another motion is, is required here. Just because we're looking at dealing with minor hockey a little differently, if we can say to the maximum of twenty-five percent, if that's for the resolution. Because again, too, if any one of these organizations is saying that they want to lessen the impact to other groups, it might mean that we're not giving back a full twenty-five percent.
Okay, so council's in agreement, we're going to vote on this particular motion? And then maybe line a new motion, or a second motion?
Good question.
Okay, Counselor Dodds?
So in the arbitration process, there could be the potential that it doesn't go in the favor that we're hoping, right? That the fee or that it's not going to be a hundred and thirty or a hundred and twenty or fifty-fifty that we're expecting. It could be around seventy-five dollars or something. So with that, because we've increased now the ICE rental rates by twenty-five percent, is there going to have to be reconsideration of to what that rebate looks like to the town residents? I'm just thinking ahead, right, that we're making this decision before the arbitration process? That could change it. Or is this based on the fact that we've lost the six hundred thousand dollars and our residents are having to pay?
Thank you, Counselor. We have entered into the discussions regarding the Omiplex fees on the basis of understanding that we have lost six hundred thousand dollars from Brazzo County. There's a responsibility to the town, by this council, to its taxpayers, to say, how are we going to address that? I think in the eyes of the arbitrator, the arbitrator will see that the town is taking measures to deal with a loss of revenue. If arbitration turns around and a decision is made by that arbitrator that we have to change course, we will be changing course. If the arbitration works in our favor, this can come back to town council, and there could be another decision to go back to regular payment schedule. If it doesn't go back in our favor, it's, did we lose more? And do we need to do something else? So because we don't know what the arbitration will actually come up with, it's something that we can't say, is this helping us or is this impacting us negatively as we speak to arbitration? I think as far as that question, I think this speaks in our favor, because we are having to take a stand on a loss of revenue.
And then it puts the pressure on the, the county to decide whether they want to give that twenty-five percent rebate or how they want to address that.
Okay. All right, so just to confirm, as presented, means twenty-five percent increase rates? Twenty-eight or twenty-five? Okay, I, I just, I wasn't at the meeting when this motion was made, so I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure what as presented. I just want to be very clear as to what I'm voting on. I mean, if as presented was three percent, then I would not be in favor, because I think we need to go twenty-eight percent increase. So I just want to confirm that as presented is twenty-eight percent increase.
Correct. As presented includes the three percent that goes across the board for every user and the twenty-five percent increase for county residents outside of town residents.
Okay. All right, Counselor McGee, did you have a comment? No, we have, we've taken off tables. We have, we have to vote on that unless there's an amendment to it. Okay. Okay, so the motion is for, as presented, which would be a three percent increase across the board, and then a twenty-five percent increase for, based on some average of users that are not town-based? Is that what I just heard? Seems confusing.
Confusing, because I thought then we were going to make, I thought it was going to be, the motion was the twenty-eight percent or twenty-five percent ICE rental rates as presented, and then a second motion would be made for the twenty-five percent in compensation to the town residents.
So I would prefer just to see us increase by twenty-eight percent across the board for, for everyone, and then we offer rebates to town users if we want to.
In one motion?
I'm very confused right now.
In one motion or?
Okay, so if we pass just this motion, all the rates across the board are going up twenty-eight percent? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was asking before, and it seemed a little bit confusing. Okay, so they're going to go up twenty-eight percent across the board? Okay, I'm fine with that. Perfect. And then we can make a second motion if we want to in relation to rebates, if so true. Okay. Thank you for the clarification. So are we ready to vote on this particular motion? Okay, so the motion is that Counselor McGee move that town council approve the proposed twenty twenty-one ICE rental rates as presented, and not part of the motion, but my understanding is as presented means twenty-eight percent increase in ICE rates. All in favor? Sorry, all opposed? Did you have your hand up for the in favor, Tom? Okay. Okay.
Thank you for that clarification, Counselor Ballas. Yes, this is for the twenty-one, twenty-two season, and it's on the fee sk, will be on the fee schedule as such.
Okay, so that motion was passed. Do you have something you wanted to?
No, I, I just wanted to, you know, I'll just make the motion that we so I'm going to make a motion that we give twenty-five percent rebate to the town residents for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two year for the, across, across the board.
So, right, we have a motion that a twenty-five percent rebate be given to Town of Drayton Valley residents.
With up to twenty-five percent?
Okay, so the motion is that council approve up to twenty-five percent rebate to Town of Drayton Valley residents. And so we have, so by making this motion, we're just kind of giving it over to administration?
To figure it out.
To determine how best to handle that?
And, yeah, I guess it says to Drayton Valley residents, so you need to go to the residents, not to the groups.
Yeah, so, yeah, the understanding is that any organization plans, I'm just spreading it evenly. We wouldn't be in favor of that, so.
Correct, thank you. And for clarification on the administration side, we've set some parameters on what needs to happen with that rebate. The rebate wouldn't be available until the end of the season, because it is based on the number of registrations for each of the organizations. It's based on the amount of revenue that we've received, because that helps to calculate then what is actually being rebated. And it's based on application directly from the resident on proof of residency and proof that they actually did can pay into the program within the hockey program or figure skating or any of those programs. And we would be issuing the check directly to that resident. We, we also have within the timeline of what, the end of next year in terms of for them to make that application to the town. Yes, all those stipulations are there.
Okay. Okay, so we're fine with the motion then, as it was presented? Any other comments, questions, or debate? Counselor Wheeler?
Yeah, thank you. So for me personally, I'm not supportive of the way this program is looking at rolling out and what we're talking about. I think our residents should be rebated to twenty-five percent. And with this program, some will be and some won't be, and I don't think that's fair with our tax dollars. And I also think that we're looking at rolling this out across all of our facilities eventually. And so you're telling me the kid who registers for a sixty-five dollar swim lesson has to come in for a, a twenty-five percent rebate on the increase, not on the whole program? So like, someone has to apply for a five dollar rebate? To me, that seems crazy that there isn't a way to say, if you're from town, this is your fee. If you're from county, this is your fee and have it set. And I think this is a lot of work for administration. And a lot of our town residents, whether they apply or don't is their choice, but I don't think they will. And I think for me, that also defeats the purpose if we're really looking at doing a rebate. So I'm not supportive of this moving forward at this time, this way.
Anything else? Counselor Dodds?
Yeah, could you just elaborate a little bit more? Because wasn't this, wasn't this discussion, didn't it happen at the Recreation Committee? Where that, I mean, so we just increased twenty-five percent? So now rates are increased across the board twenty-five percent, and there'll be no reduction to either? Is what you're saying?
No, I would like to see a rebate to the town residents, but it's the way we're talking about doing it. We've already discussed a few times in general with council as a whole, not just at the rec board, because it wasn't enough representation, is what I would say. Is the majority last time, we're in favor of the program, the way we're talking about rolling out. There's a formula, it's average, they'll figure it out. If someone's increasing their fees by fifty dollars, they'll rebate twenty-five percent of that per kid or whatever, but...
So it went to the organization and then they figured it out rather than the?
Yeah, originally, because that's who books the ICE time, is, is who's using it, is who should be getting that rebate based on the percentage of people that are from town or county, in my opinion.
Sorry, just to understand your stand, Farrell. So you're saying that you're fine with going into groups, and that's okay, but not to the resident directly? That's kind of, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
So to get more clarity, so then wouldn't there be a reduction twenty-five percent across the board? We just increased twenty-five percent rates, then wouldn't there be a reduction across the board if it goes to the organization? Because now the organization, there's both county and town residents there.
No, the, it's not automatic twenty-five percent to the organization, it's based on their users. So if they had five kids from town and five kids from the county, and that made up, and they book ten hours, right? It would all be the set fee. This, the fee is the same, it's a hundred and forty? I don't have the number in front of me, whatever it is an hour, say it's a hundred dollars an hour.
Yeah.
That's what it is. And because they have five kids in town and five kids in the county, they would get a twenty-five percent rebate on that hour for just their five kids. So instead of being a hun, it's a hundred dollars an hour for this kid, a hundred for this, a hundred for this, this one's seventy-five, 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 seventy-five.
Mm-hmm. But then, sorry, in return, they can distribute it evenly with the ten kids?
If they choose to do that, that's their issue and the way they're handling their clubs. But ultimately, we are giving the rebate based on the usage of our facility and our residents, and making sure that our residents have an affordable program. I support the program for everyone in our whole community using it. I think they should be, all be going into these rec programs and kids should be enrolling and stuff. But I don't think that the town administering a program that's a twenty-five percent rebate on the differential is, is going to do what it was intended to do. I think we need to raise the rates to cover our costs. We, we have to find a way to cover our costs at the end of the day. But how we're choosing to support our kids in sports, for me, this program isn't how I would do it. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, yeah, I, I totally agree with you, Farrell, on saying that we should be looking at whole community and, and kids and all that. But it's not just Town of Drayton Valley's responsibility, it's county's responsibility as well. The, the problem that we are trying to fix here is that that's not happening, right? So that, that's why we are trying to, I guess, take care of what we can as Town of Drayton Valley. So that's why I, you know, I strongly support the, the motion of twenty-five percent decrease for the town residents, hoping that, seeing that the county will come on board and we can lay it out and deliver it to the, the whole community kids as well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, so we have the motion. Counselor Dodds, what would you like to add?
I like how you're looking at me that way. So isn't that contradicting then the motion before? That we just, we should have just did a three percent rate across the board increase, then it's affordable for all users? If, if, if it's that way in a sense, right? Can I ask a question to administration, though? What is the easiest process for you? Is it to do it to the individual town resident, or is it to do it to the organization? What makes the most sense to administration?
We, we approach this on the two different ways. And previous discussion in GNP, we also presented additional information as to how we would approach this, based on what minor hockey is currently looking at doing, plus also on what some of the other groups are saying they need. And to us, we talked with finance and we talked with the other administrator, administration with respect to who does it impact? As I've mentioned, you know, COVID gave us a very good introduction as to how we can actually handle a number of refunds. We had to do several refunds, and that meant having to process checks for these refunds. In terms of the numbers that we expect to come in, even with half of the numbers from, from minor hockey coming in, and those being the largest group, administratively, we can't handle it. Yeah, there are more checks that need to be processed, but yes, we can handle it. As far as, again, validating, we've heard from some organizations that it is not their responsibility to administer the rebates. They're actually looking to the town to say, this is your program, you administer it.
Okay, so we have the motion that the Town of Drayton Valley rebate twenty-five, up to twenty-five percent directly to town residents, or however administration feels fit. I know the, the motion for me is a little bit loose, but I think administration has a good understanding of the intention of it. My only concern is that if this carries forward, sometimes intentions can be lost, as I've seen in previous agreements. So I'm just wondering what? I can't make friendly amendment sitting in this chair, but Counselor Ballas?
This applies just to the Omiplex.
And that should be in the motion.
Sorry, what's that?
And that should be in the motion.
Okay, so I think my recommendation is, is that I'm probably going to vote against this motion, not because I'm against it. I think it just needs to come back to another council meeting, just so we can really have administration go through another request for decision just on the rebate, and so we can have kind of more thought out wording. That's just my concern is, I'm a hundred percent, I'm in favor with the motion, but I just don't want some of the logistics to be lost in it. That's just my recommendation. And I would prefer to...
But the, the problem is, Mayor, is that we just approved twenty-five percent increase, and if we don't do the rebate in this council meeting?
We can do it in August. I mean, ICE doesn't go until late August. And we're not anticipating actually giving rebate checks until the end of the year, so we got to vote another year.
Right, all of that is, yeah, all of that is correct. But again, about how do we put that piece to the community, saying that this is, this is the, the vision that we have, this is the, the target that we are gonna, you know, gonna go forward with, right?
So I think we can all speak to that. I mean, we could point to the conversation that we're having here. I think we're all in favor of a rebate. I mean, this is recorded, I don't know how quickly it's uploaded, but I mean, I, I would feel comfortable if we table this for now, saying that, okay... But I mean, I would feel comfortable if we table this for now, saying that, okay, we raised it 28%. But where council is looking to move in the direction of offering a 25% rebate to town residents, I would be very comfortable having that conversation with, with any resident that came to me. But I just want to make sure that it's not, we don't make a motion and then. If everyone's in favor of this, then I guess so be it, but.
In my mind at least, we should make a motion loosely and add that, you know, saying that, you know, for the next council meeting, administration will bring back the methodology of administering that rebate, right? So that's why, you know, I made the motion very loosely, so they can bring, do their due diligence and bring a program back to us, which is easier to administer, administer as well as, I guess, touches all the points that we have envisioned to touch.
So just, could you read the motion back to us again, please, Ms. Landmark? So, Council Dodds?
So do we have to vote on this or can I table the motion?
You could make a table motion and we'd have to then vote on that.
Just because I agree with what you're saying, I hear Farrell's point and I want to, I want to make sure that there is consensus and that we're doing this the right way and it's not getting confused or lost in.
Council Wheeler?
I, I think that we're all in agreeance, we want to move forward to 25%. We just need to sort out the program and so I would prefer if that's what the motion said. So even if we wanted to defeat this motion that's on the table and then just make a motion that approves the 25% and admin bringing back the program to administer it, I think that might be. Rather than just table, because even if we table it, if we bring back that motion, it probably still isn't going to be specific enough to what we're looking for.
Yeah.
I think we can at the end, can you read the last like six words, Sabina, please? But it needs to come back for, I think approval is more what I'm thinking, like of how we're going to administer should still be approved, that we're not just 100% leaving it up to admin at this point, I don't know. I thought we were, I thought majority were settled, I wasn't and that's okay. But if other people aren't sure, then.
So could you make a friendly amendment that the motion, that there would be a consideration of a 25% upon discussion?
Okay, we're going around in circles once again.
Sure, you don't have a motion.
Okay, so if no one wants to make a friendly amendment or a table motion, we do have a motion that has been presented and that is that we have a 25, up to a 25% rebate to Town of Drayton Valley residents. So.
If I make a table motion, can I say things in the table motion?
No, you just make a table motion.
Okay, then I'll just like to make a table motion.
Okay, so the table motion has been made, there's no more discussion from this point. I guess all in favor? All opposed, that is carried, will be tabled until next meeting. Okay. We are department reports, I'm wildly behind schedule, so.
So can we bring this up at GNP though? As an addition?
All right, we have planning and development, 30 seconds, you're on the clock.
No pressure.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council. So for planning and development, I will start with an update on the columbarium project. So the full design by the project engineer was submitted to the contractor. And so two weeks from this Friday, we expect that the foundation will be ready and complete to receive the actual columbarium, at which point we'll touch base with the supplier of the columbarium to arrange delivery. Second item is asset management, so software implementation is complete. So we have facilities and public works department have started using the maintenance manager module, so that's good. So the next step with asset management is to update the finance department's asset database and reintegrate it back into the rest of the asset management modules. And lastly, for asset management, our GIS and asset management coordinator, Dari, is almost ready to submit a report to FCM, so this is a progress report so that the grant funds can be released to the municipality. In terms of planning, right now we have lots of applications on the go and more coming in, which is a good sign. We have one housing starts and anticipate a few more as lumber prices fall. Wendy's has broken ground and has an anticipated completion date of around mid-December. So again, that's another good news story. The general manager of planning and development position was posted last week, so hopefully our department can get some relief because we're really busy right now. In terms of permits, this year so far, we've had 43 permits up to the end of the second quarter. So last year at the same period, we had 29, so again, we're trending upwards, which is, which is great to see. For the permit value at this point, last year, we were at around 2.6 million. Right now, we're at 16.8 as of today, so that again has trended upwards, which is, which is great to see. Thank you. If you have any questions, please feel free to shoot.
Okay, any questions? Council Ballas?
Any update on the school?
Thank you, Council Ballas. So with the school, we're waiting on the updated traffic impact assessment because the one that was submitted earlier didn't put into consideration the most up-to-date site plan for that location. So we're waiting for an updated traffic impact assessment and then we'll make a decision from there.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to infrastructure and engineering, Mr. Olnick.
Hello again, 30 seconds, I'll make it quick.
Yep.
Sidewalk project replacements are ongoing, pot-holing is ongoing. We're, like I said last GNP meeting, we're doing crosswalks currently. Then we'll be doing yellow curbs and no parking areas. Water treatment plant cell five, or yeah, cell five rehabilitation project, which is CP 307, has been awarded and signed and will start on Monday. And also ISL informed us that our raw water pump station project that completed here not too long ago actually qualifies for a consulting engineer of Alberta award. So they're going to be submitting on our behalf. And typically, those awards are for typical projects with an atypical approach with a lot of challenges, which of course that one really did. So hopefully that'll be a good little piece for our community if we were able to win that award. Storm pond, obviously with the lack of moisture, but I mean, we recently got some. We're taking this opportunity to do a sonar survey of the ponds, just to see how much silt is in there, what the condition of the clay liners are in, especially with Asma View Pond and the beaver issue we had a couple of years ago, just making sure that that's all copacetic, so that's currently underway. And then of course, plans to desludge the ponds that are needed will be planned in future budget. As for landfill, I'm happy to announce that we are two line items away from the operations RFP draft, which hopefully will be coming our way this Friday. So we are extremely close. Also too, Ms. Thompson informed me that we're a little bit below budget for utilization for expenses, so that's actually tracking quite well as well. And as for capital projects, as you guys all know, the Omniplex Pond Bridge is complete and we are now moving on to the little bridge just east of the dog park there because that's in some desperate need of attention. And also we'll be looking at the bridges in front of Frank Matic and the Two in Peace Park with the MSP grant that's solely funded by federal funding.
Are those metal or are they, are they wood that we're replacing them with?
We're replacing them with metal, Council Wheeler, just due to really cost of wood, surprisingly, believe it or not, and also ease of maintenance and the fact that they're going to last, probably outlive me.
Any other questions?
Just a short, when Splash Park, I noticed that it's not working, is it shut down for some reason?
It was shut down temporarily because we had to replace a piece of pipe, so it was down for one day, but it's back in operation.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much. Move on to health and safety.
You know me, I can do this whole 30-second thing. Good morning, Councilors and Mayor. Just two things I wanted to bring to your attention because everything else been going pretty smooth. But we've had one contractor that was bid by a dog recently while they were working for us. The dog came out of the gate that was opened and ran up to the contractor and bit her on, bit her on the leg. Drew blood, so it broke the skin, big bruise on the back of her calf. But she had her tetanus shot and everything and all the procedures were followed and everything was reported and she's doing fine, so. No time lost or anything. Another big thing in our world was wasps, wasp nests were really crazy this year, still crazy, especially down at the cemetery. You know, when the summer students go in and do the work, they have to make sure they kick the, around the flowers and everything before, you know, picking up anything and trimming around them. Because we've had multiple summer students with multiple stings this year, like so, but no allergic reactions. So other than that, everything's been going really good. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, perfect, thank you very much, Community Services and FCSS. Ms. Treason?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Just very quickly with Community Services, the Aquatic Center, as the mayor mentioned, yes, the steel is up. They're just finishing off a few more pieces on the steel. Great to see that happening, but of course it does mean that it's putting a notification to the community that something is under construction. And when that happens, those people who are not necessarily the most favorable candidates in our community find their way in and take things. So we did have a break-in, we did lose a lot of cords on site. And so this is a request out to the community. Although the RCMP will take regular passes by the site, we're asking anybody if they are traveling around in the evening time or in the weekend, if they want to swing by the Aquatic Center site, because this is a community project, so let's get the community involved. And just put more eyes on that site to keep it safe, to keep it secure. So we're asking that of the community. Aside from that, the IPD team is going very well. I know even just publicly in terms of their contribution to this project and to the community, they made a small contribution to the food bank just recently, so that was great to see. We also had a presentation by Obsidian Energy with respect to their contribution to the project. And in a couple of weeks, we'll bring forward probably two more proposals. The poetry in the park has been done, completed, so the new poems that were starting to fade away from its initial installation has been completed. Those people and then as well too, those people at the outdoor rink wanting to play basketball, the back fencing is now in place so that they can go and enjoy basketball game down at the outdoor rink. Park Valley Pool, the summer camps are full, which just means that yes, people are very anxious to get their kids back into summer programming. Lessons are 80% full. The leisure swims, the fact that we have to call in extra guards means that, yeah, the hot weather has been driving people into the cool water. And August 2nd will be open for fall registrations. Our childcare center, just with respect to, it's, it's all an advocacy campaign with respect to working with the Town of Westlock on advocating to the provincial government to go after the national childcare program. But also stepping in with Calgary encouraging, which is encouraging the province to take a look at a municipal model for childcare opportunities. I'll keep it sweet, that's my report right now.
Thank you very much, any questions? All right, thank you very much, Protective and Emergency Services.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council. Just for the sake of time, I'm not going to go through all the stats for April and May as we're running, running short on time. However, there is an issue that I'd like to bring forward to council so that council is aware of. We have had a serious issue with our cat population in the town. In the last little while, we have had coming into the shelter either through cause for critters or through animal control, we've had 36 kittens that have come into the shelter. And Megan just informed me that she's got a whole pile more that are coming in. So we have an overflow of cats that we have to deal with. And part of that is a spade neuter program for those kittens because before they can go out, either through adoption or, or out elsewhere, they have to be spayed or neutered. So we are looking at a program to bring somebody in to deal with that. The cost of the program is $3,600 and that'll do up to 50 animals. At that point, it's, it becomes $50 per, per animal, which if you are familiar with vet services, that is a heck of a deal. And so I've been talking to Annette, see if we can move forward with that program. We are also looking at getting community sponsorship to help pay for the cost of that program. So that's kind of where, where we're at with it. It's unfortunate that we're having this situation, we have a lot of feral cats, particularly in the mobile home parks that are causing this problem. But we also have individuals that are allowing their cats to roam wild and free and sow their wild oats. And so that's why we're having a significant problem with this. Just wanted to bring that to council's attention.
Thank you very much, any questions? We'll move on to Department Services and Finance.
Hello again.
Hello.
We are currently working on implementing a new point-of-sale system for the pool and the Omniplex. And so we are meeting a few times a week to make sure that's all up and running. And right now, yesterday was the appeal, the assessment appeal deadline. And so we're working with some paperwork that we've received in and hoping that between us and Dan, we can solve the problem before we actually have to take it a step further. And we're getting ready for a meeting with Corvus for utility rate study. And I'm working on Q2 reporting, which is looking really good right now. And the last thing really on my list right now is that we're starting the budget process. So we're coming up with timelines and kind of how structure, how it's going to work with two, essentially two separate councils, one starting the budgeting process and one ending it. So we're just kind of figuring all that out and what that's going to look like. So that's what finance is up to right now.
All right, thank you very much, any questions? Perfect, Ms. Treason, CAO Administration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, thank you to Ms. Thompson with respect to the budget process because we know that's very important. So again, as she mentioned, just trying to work out a process that can take into consideration the two different councils. Aside from that, arbitration, I just recently sent some information this morning to Town Council on the county's position with respect to arbitration, so I imagine we'll talk a bit further on this one. Municipal world, there are two things that are happening with, within that organization. One is the Innovation Fund, of which we're looking to see if we can get some grant dollars to assist with the library expansion program or revitalization program. The other is the Municipal World Excellence Award. And we're looking at making an application to recognize the aquatic facility in the IPD process without what's been undertaken there. Aside from that, the access E11 interface program with the community as far as providing a customer service base. We're also looking at that program, we've had a good review with our senior management team and everyone's very excited with it, so we're looking to bring that forward for implementation. And that's my report.
Thank you very much, any questions? Okay, so we'll head on to Council Reports, Council Dodds?
So for me, a couple sustainability meetings, we did a sustainability video, if anybody saw, just addressing the blue chair controversy in the community. So that was fun to do and will be set up at the farmer's market today and the following. today and the following Wednesday, just to engage with the residents and kind of get feedback of what their ideas are and, um, just some fun, fun ideas and, um, that they want to see happening in the community. I've already talked to a few people that are are going to actually come down tonight and share, share some ideas with us, um, some education meetings. Uh, we do, or we're looking for a part-time access facilitator for our CTC location, um, in partnership with Northern Lakes College, so please spread the word, and if you know anybody, hopefully we'll be posting that on our website, um, and, uh, and sharing that. Uh, we also had a research education retreat with the University of, of Alberta, so that's always exciting to, uh, spend the day with them. They're always full of ideas and an amazing partner at the table. We'll also be announcing our second grant that, uh, we were not expecting to receive with them, so that's exciting. And last night, we had our, um, alumni meeting. Uh, this, I guess, was the second meeting. The hockey game for the Oilers and the Flames is back on for September nineteenth, so exciting planning and, um, some tickets to sell. And that's my report.
Thank you very much. Counselor Kamana?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep it, uh, short and sweet. Uh, Canada Day, uh, was a fantastic candidate, again, uh, with short notice. Just wanted to, uh, thank, uh, Chamber for quickly organizing that, uh, Canada Day parade, as well as the the town for the the rest of the the stuff and then the, uh, uh, fireworks. And the Education Committee, I'm not going to repeat what, uh, Counselor Dodd's mentioned, but, uh, it it's exciting that, uh, uh, we've created another, uh, part-time job with, uh, Northern Lakes College, um, as well as the, uh, uh, with the the previous grant, a full-time position and another part-time position with the new grant. So there's, uh, you know, some, uh, jobs being created through education, uh, initiatives that we are, uh, going through on top of, um, you know, helping the community to get educated as well. Uh, a- a- as Nancy mentioned, the Alumni, um, Committee, uh, there'll be a fundraiser for the zero fee initiative coming in September as well. Uh, multicultural meeting last week, uh, was very productive as well, trying to figure out, um, the initiatives going forward for the summer and, uh, next year's to come after the opening of the, um, um, of the, uh, of of everything pretty much. And, uh, on nineteenth, uh, had the Police and Security Committee as well, and went through, uh, some of the concerns we have in the community. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Deputy Mayor McGee?
In the interest of time, I've got nothing to add. Thanks.
Counselor Wheeler?
Uh, no, nothing to report this time.
Counselor Ballas?
Thank you. I'll I'll make this very brief, and I I just want to stress one thing, and that was the, uh, the fly-in that they had at the airport on the, uh, on the tenth, and there was approximately forty different aircraft there, and it was well-attended. Uh, and the potential of what the airport can offer us, and I think that's something that we really need to concentrate on, and look at what we can do to make that more utilized.
Excellent. Anything else? Okay, um, just my report. Uh, the one thing I'll mention was just the July seventh. We did have Minister Driesen in Drayton Valley making a significant announcement on the hemp initiative, um, both for the Bio Compensates Group as well as the Alberta Hemp Alliance, which was a committee pretty much driven by the town of Drayton Valley and, uh, and our commitment to helping diversify Alberta's economy and push the hemp. So just a big thank you to everyone involved in that, and it was an exciting day to have the minister out here making an announcement at, uh, Bio Compensates Group. That was the only noteworthy thing over the past couple of weeks, so I'll move on to information items. Ten point one, Economic Development Committee meeting minutes, May sixth, two thousand twenty one. Ten point two, Drayton Valley RCMP stats, June twenty twenty one. Ten point three, Drayton Valley Brazile County Fire Service stats, April and May. Can I get a motion to accept these as information? Counselor Ballas, all in favor? We will adjourn our meeting at eleven thirty seven AM. We'll move into GNP and I'll ask, uh, I unfortunately have about three important phone calls.